Thank you. This is June 10th, Committee of the Whole, Finance Administration and Communication. We all, there are six council members here, and we have a very short agenda. And I think we should just get started with our finance director. And I think this is a budget process update.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. I have a few updates for you. The first is in regards to our long-range financial strategy update. It was a little bit of a slow month for us. I was gone on vacation for a couple of weeks. But during that time, we have had some good rounds of internal review, as well as a lot of research on what other agencies are doing, where that document is living, and how it's being managed. We have provided you with links to the examples that we find interesting and feel have opportunities for us to elevate what we are doing. So those are out there for you to review. In the next month, we are working with our communications group to start working on sort of a new communication and display of that work as we start actually working towards documentation. So that is out there. It is moving, hoping for really good progress once we sit down and are able to start writing. The budget contingency planning, the last month has been spent on helping us identify what a significant and quick economic downturn would look like for the city, both from a revenue perspective as well as an expenditure perspective. At the revenue side, we've found that really if you isolate, if you sort of take development out of the picture, it has its own kind of decision-making structure to it. We would be general fund only, looking at about a $5.5 million loss, really associated to sales tax, quite similar to what we saw during the pandemic, but not so focused on some of the same sales tax categories. So then taking that $5.5 million, assuming that that is the gap that we would need to address. Our financial planning staff has been working to identify what amount of reduction would the city see if we really initially had to just take that quick and dirty administrative, you know, low-hanging fruit type of approach, which is, you know, supplies, travel, training, freezing, vacant positions, just essentially, you know, doing what we need to do to put on the brakes. I had a chance to talk to Haley Zercher, our financial planning manager, this afternoon. And what we're seeing is that, again, we're still at a high level. She has not had a chance to really get down into the details. But at, by taking that approach, we can essentially manage a budget reduction. We've asked the analysts to approach that question from, you know, a three, a 1% reduction, a 3% reduction, and a 5% reduction from sort of a departmental response, where could we get? And they're pretty comfortably managed up to the 3% mark. At 5%, it's a stretch, and that may need to include the use of salary and benefit contingency, or eliminating or stopping some of the external transfers. But we're not to that point yet, but I'm here to say a swift, severe economic downturn would be manageable until, you know, we can get our feet under us. So we will get this, this part complete and documented so that you can see sort of, you know, what assumptions were made on both sides. And then our next phase is to really take this from the line item approach to a more programmatic approach, so that the next time, you know, we are facing a struggle, we can talk more about the programs that would need to be either postponed, put on hold, eliminated, be able to get more at the impacts to the community than kind of speaking at line items. But for right now, Phase 1 of contingency planning is sort of nearing completion. And then we'll move on to sort of understanding more at a budget offer level, programmatic level, what is the city required to do, who says so, at what level are we doing it right now? So we understand sort of where those dials are and can have some of that conversation. Any thoughts or questions, interests that you have along the way? Please, please let me know. Yeah.
I realized as you finished your sentence, that was a general invitation for the future, but I raised my hand.
Anytime.
So during the pandemic--
Councilmember Kritzler.
Thank you. Yeah, apologies. I thought I was called on, but I should have waited. So I was curious, during the pandemic, there was discussion, some cities approached some of the financial uncertainty that happened with furloughs. And I remember at the time, we had some discussion about that. And so I'm just curious how, as part of this assessment, you might consider or think about furlough policy at a time when we're not yet in, in a crisis, and hopefully won't be, as part of this study?
Here's my answer. Along the way, certainly, you know, if there is a policy that I think, or we think, needs to be revised or, or looked at, I will certainly bring that to you. Furloughs is probably not one that you would hear as a recommendation from me. And not because I get it from the people's side. I mean, it's, those are hard decisions to make. But what I will say is the way that we managed the reductions, as well as the recovery, allowed us to be in a much stronger position than the other cities are or have been. So a lot of what we were able to do in the last biennium was because of sort of the approach that we all took to managing the pandemic. So furloughs is not something that I support from a city perspective, because when, when we have those situations arise, it's typically something that's going to be for a longer term than we can define. And it's just sort of a short-term solution to a longer-term problem. So that would be my answer for, for furloughs. But certainly, if there's interest, we can, we can talk about pros and cons.
Just a quick follow-up question. Thank you. I appreciate that. And to be clear, I wasn't advocating for them, but more just remembering, I felt like that was like a, an unresolved discussion that, that came up during that time. So great to hear your perspective on that, and kind of how that played out for us versus other cities that took that tactic. I guess my request would, or question would be, as we do this review or planning going forward, it sounds like we have learnings from both the COVID-19 pandemic, as well as I imagine we have learnings from the 2008, 2009 financial crisis. And it would be interesting to know, what are the, what do we see as some of the things we did at those times that kept us strong and resilient, and that we would employ again? And then if there's any learnings of things that we'd improve on?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Call on myself here. Actually, I think Councilmember Kritzler has a pretty good point. And I think, and I understand the distinction between something temporary that went longer than we thought on a pandemic, and a downturn in the economy, which usually would be years, and the impact could be even more years. I understand that distinction. I do remember the furloughs, and it felt like there were operational people who got furloughed first. And, and there were other positions that, that seemed to be protected or immune. So I do think that there's a policy issue here. I don't know that it's the finance director, but I do think the mayor and council should get together in advance on how we would do furloughs, for whatever the reasons are. I'm just tend to think that there's something there. And I get what you're saying.
We will. Part of what we're documenting is certainly some things that we learned. And I think we all learned along the way, that there was an appropriate use for one-time money for ongoing things. We, we experienced that together. So we will, we're putting in, into writing sort of when we would pull a lever and what that would look like. So as that comes to you, we're, we're looking for it to resonate with all of us. And then further conversations that we need to have, we can do.
Great. Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Forsythe.
I just want to say thank you for doing this work. I know it's not easy work, and sharing with us early, because I know all of this is on probably all of our minds right now. And it's nice to know that you guys are already ahead of it and in advance of looking at all the outcomes, looking at all the possibilities, and knowing that that 5%, or the $5.5 million, knowing that we can manage for a hot minute is really reassuring. So I appreciate it.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much, Director Cochran. Really appreciate your commentary on this and your overall approach. Couple of thoughts. Really appreciate you identifying the largest risk, of course, being the sales tax revenue. That's helpful. On the expenditure side, one of the items that I am just already hearing a lot of demand for from community is, of course, in our human services arena. And we can't say how big the needs are, but I can anticipate that we'll be having some requests made here in this room and to this council. So if we could take special care to monitor unspent dollars in the human services budget or revenues that are available, because I think the council needs to be prepared in order to address those moments when they come. The other question, just kind of at a higher level and also related, is I know, and I'm going to out myself here, I have not submitted my comments on the long-range financial policies. And I think that that's a little bit related to the conversation we're having here about potential and future tactics. You gave us a May 30 deadline. I absolutely did not meet that. I don't know if I'm the only one. But in order to have the next part of the conversation move forward, when do you absolutely need council members to put their comments in our individual--
You know, right now, we're just asking for comments on what's out there, which is really just sort of the elimination of material that we don't think needs to be represented in there anymore, because we can summarize in sort of a historical section. So feedback on that, thoughts on any of the agencies that have similar work, and kind of show some of the things we do, some of the things we don't do. Just by the end of, you know, June, so I can share back with you in July at FAC. You know, really what we're aiming for is a study session in the October timeframe. And so, you know, we'll be doing kind of more work August, September timeframe to, to get key areas teased out.
Okay. Thank you. Really appreciate that.
And on the human services side, just to let you know, we'll, we're not only monitoring what's going on, you know, here at the city, but also, you know, conversations that we're hearing at all levels. So we'll let you know whatever we learn.
Yes. And I actually had asked, or mentioned that when, in the previous meeting, what is the emerging need out there? Because I, and I don't know if that's health and human services looking into that, but I do think that's an important issue. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. And I wanted to echo my colleague's question, Ms. Kritzler, about the furlough policy. And thank you for doing that. I think Director Laird, we have worked on that, as far as I understand. So that does exist now, which is a helpful tool for us in the longer term. I heard a little bit about what you were saying was a concern about how we handle staffing resources in a longer-term sort of economic downturn. And one thing I'd like to encourage us to consider is that probably the most important thing to staff is being able to hold on to their job during that time. So there are other ways, including furlough, pay cuts, those kinds of things that can be negotiated, and I just don't want to close that door. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, applause? You have, oh, sorry. Continue on.
We're only at intermission. Okay. So item number three is there, is related to the CFD number 2014-1. There are three supervisors that need to have their appointments re-approved by council. I, I can either bring this to FAC to get approval to go on to consent, or I can ask to just go to consent on July 1st or 15th, if that works.
Any objections? Question?
Just a little extra commentary, since I chair this CFD. Just for the council's reference, this is actually likely to be a pretty short-term appointment, as this CFD is, is likely headed toward a dissolution as its work is wrapping up. So this is, I really appreciate Director Cochran raising this as a, let's make sure that we don't inadvertently end up with a vacancy as we're trying to have these important conversations about the future of the CFD. So thanks for your consideration, council.
Other comments or questions? Any council member with concern about putting this request on our consent agenda? I see no objections.
Thank you. Okay, this one is a big one. So there was House Bill 2015 that was approved at the state level that gives the city council-matic authority to increase sales tax by 0.1% to be used specifically for criminal justice needs. We are going through the analysis of our qualifications for that revenue source, as well as what that process looks like. So planning at July 15th, or the, excuse me, the July FAC meeting to provide you with all that we know, and then map out a path forward for council. If there is, you know, more conversation that is needed, and we need to do a study session versus, you know, the next FAC, we'll kind of figure out what level of discussion is needed. If this is something that council does want to take action on and wishes to make it effective as soon as it can, which is January 1st, we need to have something approved in October to provide to the Department of Revenue so that we can start collecting. The size of this revenue source is equivalent to the Transportation Benefit District. So it's about 5.5, just fills our gap, 5.5 million of revenue annually that the city could utilize for criminal justice needs. So we'll be providing, like I said, a summarization of the House bill, as well as our qualifications and points for discussion.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much. And thanks for the heads-up that you're bringing this conversation forward. This is, of course, a tool that the legislature gave us, and we have a couple of years to decide. So as we consider the conversation, one of my questions is about whether it's right to consider this now or to wrap it into the budget conversations next year. The Subcommittee worked with Director Cochran and her awesome team last year to solve the $6 million funding gap. So at the moment, it's not feeling emergent, but if you, I look forward to the conversation on all the other parts. A couple more questions, just knowing that the county is also considering their own increase in sales tax for the public safety. They are also considering the Transportation Benefit District. And as we consider raising sales taxes for public safety, our residents would be experiencing those other two at the exact same time. So it'd be helpful to see the analysis about the impact to residents holistically, knowing that we don't have a ton of influence over what the county decides to do, but likely those two measures are also going to take place. And as we consider raising new revenue, hopefully this is aligning with, council was told that we'll have a, an update soon on the co-responder program, and hopefully that is coming soon, maybe even ahead of this conversation. I think that that would be helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember Forsythe.
Thank you. There's also a parks levy that's going to be on the ballot this year. So as we get that broader picture, I would love to have that one in there as well, because those generally pass here. And otherwise, I look forward to the conversation and figuring it out. I wasn't really prepared. I don't see this in, in the agenda, so I wasn't prepared for this part of the conversation. But I look forward to hearing more.
Thank you. And thank you for your flexibility. It is, I have to prepare my agenda now, like two weeks before I talk to you, and there's a lot that happens. But if you want me to stop talking, I certainly can at any point. But I do plan to bring that information to you in July, and then we can figure out, you know, how to best finish that conversation. And just the last thing, you will also be seeing a beginning fund balance adjustment coming, yes.
Councilmember Kritzler, I thought you had your hand raised.
I did, on the previous item, if that's all right. So I would just love to know, as you come forward, what the allowable uses are of that funding? For example, could we use it to fund alternative crisis response? Or what are some of the bounds around that?
Yeah.
And then I would also say, because as part of solving for that gap, one of the things that we did was leverage taxes on utilities, is just understanding what the trade-offs might be, or your analysis of the difference between using tax on utilities versus sales tax, especially given also the compounding utility rates increases that we're going to see between the county--
Yeah.
--and other sources, so.
Councilmember Salah Houdin.
Thank you. Just to respond to the alternative crisis response, we're having that conversation at our next Public Safety and Human Services meeting. And then as this conversation moves along, in my other role, I believe this was a bill that I voted for, so I'm going to talk with our attorney and just make sure that if this, whatever the conversation goes, if there's a vote, I will likely abstain. But just wanted to clarify that here, in case that needs to happen. But I will talk with the attorney.
So before we move on to the next item, you, you didn't describe an update to the gap, the need side of taxes. Like, what are we going to, why do we need it? And we've been investing in technology, we've been investing in different ways of addressing law enforcement issues. It'd be difficult for me to make a decision to raise taxes without understanding a current projection of the need. So I don't know if the police department is prepared for that.
We are starting those conversations, and I would hope that, that council, as well as the community, recognizes that the city isn't one to implement taxes unless there's, just because we have the ability to tax doesn't mean that we should. And that's the first conversation that we'll be having.
Perfect.
Is whether or not we should.
And that's really my question. Should we? I know we can.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item two, last item, Director Laird, I think we have a update on HR status update, so.
Yes, hello. Thank you. Councilmember Fields, hello, council. So just giving you an update, no action needed on your part, which is good. So I had previously come to council back in March. FAC, just to give you an update on anticipated items you could see potentially coming from HR. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. I'm going to plan to give you another update in September as well, just so that you're, you know what we're doing. So the first thing I wanted to update you on is regarding the collective bargaining agreements. As you know, we have eight collective bargaining agreements, and currently, right now, we're negotiating six of them. Five of them were actually in process. So four have actually started. So that would be RESHA. That's the Redmond City Hall Employee Association. We also have police support, police lieutenants, and police telecommunicators. So we've actually started negotiating with them, started the process, I should say. We're in the process of planning negotiations with FIRE. We haven't had our first meeting yet, but that's coming up soon. And the goal is to come to council, hopefully by the fall, November and December, with any of these contracts that we've actually come to tentative agreements on. So, but any contracts that we have not come to tentative agreements on, we will just continue to negotiate into 2026. I really can't tell you anything more than that at this point on these, on these contracts. We do have that sixth contract, which is FIRE-uniformed. It expired on December 31st of 2024, and we're currently in mediation with that one. So if we do reach a tentative agreement, maybe we'd be coming to council the end of the summer or the, or early fall. And if not, then we will just continue the negotiation process. All right. The other project we're working on is a compensation study changes. And we have contracted with a compensation consultant firm to review the executive pay plan, which includes the chief operating officer, directors, and deputy directors. And we're also seeking guidance from them on internal pay equity, equity pay policies, compensation best practices, and potential review of other non-represented classifications. And I'm working with Anita Page and Dr. Adrianne Thomas on compensation equity policies. The consultant's review should be completed by the end of July, and then a decision will be made about how we proceed. So if there are any changes to the pay plans, we have to decide whether we come to council mid-year in '25, or we wait until the end of the year for effective 1/1/26. Another item we've been working on is the personal manual revisions. So we have started the process to update personal manual, taking a holistic approach to update with new federal and state laws, follow best practices, and inclusion of equity and ready policies. Language updates will be reviewed by managers and supervisors, approved by the director's team, negotiated with the unions for any policies that affect union employees, and then any benefit changes are approved by council. Whatever we are able to get done in this year, we're anticipating trying to come to council by December of, of this year with any benefit changes. And finally, the last item that I wanted to update you on is regarding UKG Pro, which is the HR payroll system update. This is actually, so we're continuing to work on the, the updates with our vendor, UKG Pro. And we have started the build phase of several components in the system, and we are verifying current data in our existing system to make sure that it maps over correctly to the new system. So most of the changes are pretty much behind the scenes, with probably the most notable change that employees and council will see is better access to self-service features. We have started to negotiate the impacts of any process changes with the unions, and we will be updating the personal manual and CBAs as appropriate. And obviously, throughout this process, further communication will be provided to employees once we have confirmation of the different changes that might be occurring. We are still targeting a go-live date of October 25th, and we do not anticipate any council approval on any of the items, but we will continue to provide you updates. So with that, that is my update for the third quarter. We continue to be excited about these progress changes. And as I've said before, and I, I appreciate the opportunity to share with you how our HR department is working, have outstanding staff, well-qualified staff, and they are excited about these projects. And with that, I'd be pleased to take questions. And with that, I'd be pleased to take questions.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Director Laird, and we appreciate you taking the time. So questions from council? I see Councilmember Anderson.
Would love to see the personnel manual to committee, if that's possible, after that gets updated, since we just did discuss it earlier this year.
To committee?
Yeah. Just for overview or informational. That would be great. Thank you.
Can you do that?
I'm really not sure what that means. I was going to ask Melissa. What does that mean to go to committee? You mean--
Bring back to--
So you said council will not be informed of changes. You'll take care of it. I may have misheard, but what I heard was that we will not be informed of personnel manual changes.
Well, you would be informed, but you may not be, you'd only approve any benefit changes.
I understand that.
Yep. Yes, we can bring back to the FAC?
That's what I'm asking.
Yes. Got it. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Noeva Camina.
Thank you, Chair. Director, I had a question on clarification. There's currently negotiations going on with a contract that expired in 2024. I wanted to back up and confirm the month that that's been.
When in 2024?
Oh, it expired December 31st of 2024.
We're about six months out of that. And since this is my first go-around with contract negotiations and that, how frequently does that happen where we're out of contract?
Well, you know, it actually, I would say probably about two, three-fourths of our contracts get settled by the end of the year, and about a quarter continue into the next year. It just depends upon how long that timing is. Yeah.
Again, another new question. Is that typical?
Yes. Yeah. Contracts, we start negotiating usually in June or so, and depending upon the, how much information needs to be going back and forth between the city and the union, it could take quite a while to go through all of the different changes and different elements of what they're trying to, what the union might want, or what the city might want. So it's a lot of back and forth.
Yeah, I understand.
It just takes a long time to do that. And it also depends upon how often we're able to meet as well. The other thing that's important to remember is, we have to get to agreement probably by mid-September to October, in order to bring it to council in December on time, so that we can make it the effective 1-1 of the next year. So there's just a lot of different moving parts that we need to work through.
I'll reserve my other questions for email, so that I can make them as concise as can be--
Okay.
--and have them be offline.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
And I always appreciate when staff responds to the entire council when they get a email from us.
Of course.
Thank you. Anything else from council? I see actually no hands, and I see shaking heads, no. So we appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And with that, unless there is something else, I think we are adjourned. We are adjourned. Thank you.